I'd like to call this order, this meeting to order this time and ask Mr. Cooper to offer the pledge of allegiance, please.
Stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
This time we're going to recognize Dr. Milton Liverman, Superintendent Superintendent of Suffolk City Schools, Mr. Brian Liverman and his wife, Mr. Shirley will come up here, please.
as well as the, all the school staff, the 2,000 staff members, we do have a resolution that our clerk of the board will be reading, Ms. Cynthia Chavis. Ms. Chavis?
A resolution of the school board for the city of Suffolk, Virginia, remembering the contributions of Milton R. Liverman in advancing the quality of education in the city of Suffolk, Virginia. Dr. Milton Liverman was appointed superintendent of Suffolk Public Schools in July 2000, capping a career with Suffolk Public Schools that began in 1974. His career began as a high school mathematics teacher, middle school assistant principal, test analyst, supervisor of research and computer technology, coordinator of pupil personnel, and assistant superintendent. During his tenure as superintendent, Dr. Liverman oversaw the reorganization of the central administration and special education to handle unprecedented student growth and the opening of four new schools, Kings Fork Middle School, Kings Fork High School, Creekside Elementary School, and Hill Point Elementary School. Dr. Liverman was instrumental in reducing the ratio of student to computers to three to one and introducing SOLO, an online SOL assessments program of district development assessments used by teachers regularly to test student progress in the standards of learning. It was a well-known fact that as superintendent, every action or decision of Dr. Liverman was made with the benefit of the student in mind. During his 36-year career with Suffolk Public Schools, his devotion to improving education enhanced the quality of education experiences that were available to our students. Dr. Liverman was a straight shooter who treated everyone the same regardless of rank and worked to ensure that Suffolk Public Schools provided a welcoming, safe, and secure environment for the students, parents, and employees. Dr. Liverman will be well-remembered for his involvement in education and his tireless efforts in support of Suffolk Public Schools. As a faithful and dedicated public servant, committed to the students and staff of the school division, Dr. Liverman was a strong advocate for public education and believed that a quality education must be made available to each individual student. His leadership was invaluable to not only Suffolk Public Schools but also to the entire Suffolk community. There is no doubt that Dr. Liverman provided a positive impact on the immediate and future lives of our students. Because of his dedication to providing a quality educational experience, his knowledge in leadership, and his encouragement and direction, teachers and staff were able to better prepare students to be successful not only in school but also in their future endeavors. Dr. Liverman retired as school superintendent in 2010 and at that time, at the time of his retirement, still wanting to accomplish more but realized that his to-do list would be endless. Wherefore be it resolved that the school board for the city of Suffolk remembers the many contributions of Dr. Milton R. Liverman in advancing the quality of public education in the city of Suffolk. Signed by Dr. Michael J. Dobrinsky, Chairman of the school board, and Cynthia B. Chavis, Clerk of the school board.
Once again, on behalf of the school board, not just the school board and the staff but the entire Suffolk community, we thank you for sharing your husband and your father for the many years with Suffolk Public Schools. Thank you very much. And now if you have a few words.
Good evening. On behalf of the Livermans' family, Brian and I would like to thank you for honoring our loved one, Dr. Milton R. Liverman. One of Milton's greatest achievements in life was that of an educator. He touched so many lives in this role. In keeping with his legacy as an educator and we are establishing the Dr. Milton R. Liverman Legacy Foundation. This foundation will continue the role of helping to educate our youth. Annually, two graduating seniors, one male, one female, from each of the high schools will receive scholarships in the amount of $1,000 each in honor of the life and legacy of Dr. Liverman. These scholarships will be awarded beginning in spring 2018. It is our hope that you will see the value of this foundation and lend your support. Again, Brian and I thank you for this great honor. Thank you.
Good evening. Each month we take this opportunity to share with you and our viewing audience some of the excitement that happens in our classrooms each and every day and some of the great achievements of both our students and our staff. Each spring, the school board continues its longstanding tradition of recognizing each high school's honor graduates. Instead of asking the seniors and their families to come to the school board meeting at City Hall, the school board is bringing its meeting to each high school's auditorium. Tonight, we are coming to you from Lakeland High School and we'll be recognizing the honor graduates from the Cavalier class of 2017. Last month, we recognized Nanceman River High honor graduates and on May 11th, the board will meet at Kings Fork High School to recognize its honor graduates. We have asked that each student introduce their parents, share their college and career plans, and tell us about one of their fondest memories while a student in Suffolk Public Schools. I'd now like to invite Lakeland Principal Douglas Wagner to start the introductions of tonight's honored guests.
Good evening Chairman Dobrinsky, Vice Chairman Copeland, members of the board, Attorney Waller, and Dr. Whitney. We want to thank you very much for bringing this opportunity here to Lakeland High School and we want to welcome you here to Lakeland for the recognition of our honor graduates. This is one of the top three times, I think, for a principal in a high school that goes right along with graduation and other recognitions of the success of our students. So when we think about some of the students that you're going to see this evening, it brings a lot of joy to my heart because they really epitomize what it means to be a stellar student. Many of them are not only academically successful but are involved in athletics, extracurriculars, church and community work, and also with employment and other engagements within the community. Unfortunately for that reason, some of our honor graduates were not able to make it this evening, but you're going to hear from many of them and I think you'll be highly impressed and pleased with our honor graduates here at Lakeland High School. To provide with a little bit more introduction, I'm going to call on our senior guidance counselor and director of our guidance department, Ms. Sheila Williams, to share just a bit more about our honor graduates. Ms. Williams?
Good evening, Dr. Whitney and all school board members. Again, my name is Sheila Williams and I am the senior counselor here at Lakeland High School. It is my pleasure to work with the seniors here. It brings me great joy to work with them, especially this time of year as they've, you know, begun their deposits and made their selections as far as their schooling, whether they're going to the military or whether they're going off to the world of work. It has been a pleasure all year to work with them and to assist them in those endeavors. And as I said, as you can see behind me, I have just a few of our students and Mr. Wagner alluded to, that some of our students are engaged in other curriculum, extracurricular activities such as sports, some of them do hold jobs, so, and some of them have other things that they are involved in. So tonight, we just have a few of our students that are with us this evening, but you will hear from some of the brightest students that you ever want to meet, some of the most fascinating students that you ever want to meet. And without further ado, I'd like to introduce to you the honor graduates of the 2017 class of Lakeland High School.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney, school board chairperson, vice chairperson, and other school board members. My name is Tanisha Austin. My parents are Tracy Austin and Johnny Wells. As far as college, I'm currently undecided, but my top two choices are the University of Virginia and the College of William &amp; Mary. My career plans are to become a journalist and then an editor-in-chief. My fondest memory of attending Suffolk Public Schools is my AP Language and Composition class with Ms. Arianne Williams. She taught us so much more than just English. Thank you.
If we could have each parent to stand when the student comes up and let's give this young lady a hand, please.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney, school board chairperson, vice chairperson, and other school board members. My name is Myra Bailey and my mother is Barbara Bailey. As far as my university of choice, I have decided to go to the University of Virginia and major in chemical engineering. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools was also my AP Language and Composition course with Ms. Arianne Williams.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney, school board chairperson, vice chairperson, and other school board members. My name is Ebony Barnes. My parents are Barbara Wilson and Alfonso Barnes. And college, I mean, my future plans for college is to attend VCU and major in computer My fondest memory of attending Suffolk Public Schools would probably be the amazing people that I have met and the ones who have taught me the most. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney and the rest of the school board. My name is Hannah Carr. My parents are Brian Carr and Karen Carr. My college plans are to attend Paul D. Camp for two years and then transfer to Longwood University. My career plans are to become a pediatrician. My fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is probably the pep rallies. They're so fun and I love all the cheering and the band and everything like that. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney and other school board members. My name is Brendan Coker and my parents are Lynn Coker and David Coker. College, I plan to attend Old Dominion University and I would like to major in engineering and minor in music. My fondest memory by far from what you guys have put on here is definitely the teachers. Teachers by far. They've been some of your best friends and had your back for three years and any trouble that you've had, they've been there for you. So I thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney, school board chairperson, vice chairperson, and other school board members. My name is Dante Copeland. My parents are Delitra Banks and Gary Banks. My college plans are to attend Virginia Wesleyan this coming fall and my career plans are to major in music education. And my fondest memory would have to be when I was selected to participate in the Virginia Honor Choir in this past November. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney, school board chairperson, vice chairperson, and other school board members. My name is Savannah Dever. My parents are Angela and Gilbert Dever. My college plans are to attend Tidewater Community College and then transfer to VCU. My career plans are to be an animator and to be a video game designer. My fondest memory of attending Suffolk Public Schools is to be able to go to art every day. Going to art every day has made my dream come true. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney, school board chairperson, vice chairperson, and other school board members. My name is Kyle Evans. My mom is Lisa Evans. College career plans for me are going to be transferring to ODU from Paul D. Camp. I'm going to be a software engineer and my fondest memory is having a real life experience in first years of case.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney, school board chairperson, vice chairperson, and other school board members. My name is Imani Hernandez. My parents are Linda Stewart and Miguel Hernandez. After school, I plan on attending the Norfolk Naval Shipyard Apprenticeship School, then going on to the United States Air Force, and finally majoring and getting my Masters of Business Administration. My fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is being in the Lakeland High School Marching Quiet Storm Band.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney, school board chairman, vice chairperson, and other school board members. My name is Alonte Hicks. My parents are Delgado Hicks, Amber Tester, and Shante Phillip. My plans are to go to TCC and ODU. I plan to go to be a game designer or animator. My greatest memory would probably be finding out that I was going to be with honors because it proves that I really worked hard and it proves that this was the greatest day of my life.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney and fellow school board members. My name is Yvonne Joseph and my parents are Francine and Jeffrey Joseph. I will be attending Old Dominion University as of fall 2017. Excuse me. And majoring in environmental science, my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools would be all of the activities and sports that I participated in. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney and school board members. My name is Alasia Lee. My parents are Vanessa and Christopher Lee. My plans after high school are to attend Radford University and Dan Air Force. I plan to major in forensic science and my fondest memory at Suffolk Public Schools would have to be meeting new people and especially the sports here. Thank you.
When you speak, speak into the mic, with the microphone in front of your face and your mouth. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney and fellow school board members. My name is Asia Liggins. My parents are Keisha Liggins and Lamont Curl. I plan, I plan to attend North Carolina A&amp;T State University, majoring in bioengineering and a minor in dance. And my favorite memory being with Suffolk Public Schools would have to be being a member of the LHS Marching Quiet Storm Band for seven years. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Dr. Whitney and fellow school board members. My name is Devon Morris, the son of Almeida Morris and Edward Morris Jr. In the fall of 2017, I will be attending North Carolina A&amp;T University and majoring in mechanical engineering. My fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools would have to be the pep rallies. It was always a lot of fun for me and being a member of the Lakeland High School basketball team. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney and school board members. My name is Creashawn Oztechi and I am the child of Craig Techi and Valrica Oz. My plans after high school is to attend Regent University and receive my law degree in business law. My fondest memory of being here at Lakeland is joining the Marching Quiet Storm Band this year. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney, chairperson, vice chairperson, and other ladies and gentlemen of the school board. My name is Letty Owens. My parents are Molly and William Owens. My plans for after high school is to apprentice and become a licensed tattoo artist so I can do medical tattooing for burn victims. My fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is the supportive teachers and just welcoming, heartwarming staff of Suffolk Public Schools. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney and the members of the school board. My name is Demetria Parker. My parents are Edward Dennis Parker Jr. and Sabrina Parker. My career plans after school is to obtain a Masters of Divinity and become a chaplain in the U.S. Air Force. My most fondest memory in Suffolk Public Schools would have to be entering in the door credit program to obtain credit for college. Thank you.
They got a script up here. How y'all doing today? Y'all doing good? Okay. Perfect. My name is Riley Richardson. I go to Lakeland. After high school, I'm playing ball, football at Bridgewater College, and I was thinking about, you know, physical therapy, something like that, but I'm not 100% sure. People change all the time. And my best memories are playing football at Forest Glen for two years and then Lakeland for four.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney and other school board members. My name is Cole Roop, son of Marion Roop and Rick Roop. My plans after school are to enlist in the U.S. Coast Guard at the rate of diver and my fondest memory of school would be the ROTC program and soccer. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney and school board members. My name is Cheyenne Schmac. I'm the daughter of Richard and Jennifer Schmac. My plans after Lakeland are to go to Virginia Wesleyan College where I will major in biology and veterinary medicine. And my fondest memory while in Suffolk Public Schools would probably have to be all of the extracurricular activities that I've participated in. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney and other school board officials. My name is Dorian Seaborn and my mother is Melissa Norman. My career goal is to go to Virginia Commonwealth University where I will then become a neonatal nurse practitioner. I believe my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is in my fourth grade year at Robertson, my teacher was Ms. Roberta Branch. Please stand. And we did an SOL prep song because it was like, okay, we're in fourth grade, we need to get hyped for our SOL. So we remixed a popular song and it was amazing. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kayleen Thomas. My parents are Kimberly and James Thomas, but tonight I am here supported by Pam and Tommy Goodman. I will be attending Randolph-Macon College in the fall. I'll be majoring in pre-med and then I plan to enroll in medical school to become a nurse practitioner. My fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is playing field hockey, eighth through 12th grade here at Lakeland. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney, Dr. Whitney and school board members. First I'd like to say that we are blessed to be graduating this year. My name is Garrett Whitney. My parents are Dr. Thomas Whitney and Robin Whitney. I'm attending Nova State University in the fall, majoring in computer information systems. After, I plan on getting my masters in cybersecurity and working for the federal government and in the future founding my own cybersecurity firm. My fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is playing football four years at Lakeland. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney and school board members. My name is Jordan White. My wonderful parents are Jennifer Minor and Kenneth Minor. I will be attending Old Dominion University this fall coming up to get a major in mechanical engineering. I would say that my fondest memory of Lakeland High School will be attending the baseball team. Had a lot of fun. Thank you.
And feelings for board members.
Congratulations to all of you and especially to parents. I have a special guest that I invited here, Mrs. Cheryl Reddington. Are you here? Please stand. She is the legislative assistant for Delegate Cliff Hayes from the General Assembly. Thank you so much for coming. I want to tell you students and your parents, one of the things that board members do, because sometimes people don't know what we do, is to go and plead with legislators from here, I've been to Congress as well as the General Assembly, to fund public schools. And I was so grateful, we had a wonderful conversation. Ms. Reddington and I had a wonderful conversation about the public schools and I told her how bright our students were and how impressed she would be if she listened to them tell us where they were going and what their future plans are. I am so very proud of you and I continue to be proud of you and talk about you to anybody who'll listen. Thank you so much, Ms. Reddington, for coming.
I'd like to congratulate the Cavalier honor graduates of 2017. Over the last couple of years, I've got to know many of you on paper, if you've applied for any assistance from the Suffolk Education Foundation, and it's nice to put a name with a face finally. I'm so proud of each and every one of you and I wish you well and I'd like to congratulate the parents on a job well done in having your students be honor graduates here at Lakeland High School. Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate all the honor graduates and especially those who I've seen graduate from Robertson Elementary along the way. I followed them for many years and I've seen what a great contribution they have made to schools here in Suffolk. I wish you well and I know you will do well in all of your endeavors in the future and just don't forget where you came from. Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate all the honor graduates of Lakeland High School. I'm very proud to be a part of this high school. In fact, I'm a part of all high schools, but Lakeland is special because my son and daughter finished, well, they attended Forest Glen and my daughter finished, attended Lakeland. But I am very pleased to congratulate all of you and I hope you have much success and as has been stated, don't forget from whence you have come and come back to contribute to us because as the people told me, my teacher told me that the boys... to us because as the people told me, my teacher told me that the boys finish college and they all leave and go elsewhere. We'd like for some of you to stay around, so I adhered to what she asked, and I stayed around, so I've been around for the last 50 years, so I'm proud to be a fact, be a part of this school system. Thank you.[1728.52][1728.52](applause)
I'd also like to thank you all for your effort this year, and at this time, I'd like to ask all parents of students graduating to stand. Parents, please stand of graduating seniors.[1742.80][1742.80](applause) As always, I'm very proud of each of our students, and I thank the parents for allowing us to educate your students throughout the years here in Suffolk. Students, this is just the beginning. You have your whole life ahead of you. You obviously know what it means to be successful. We wish you much success, and we thank you for being a part of our community, and as was said, to come back to our community as well. We'll see you at graduation. Thank you.[1781.46][1781.46](applause) This concludes this section of our meeting tonight, and if you want to stick around, we're going to have our general meeting started at 7 o'clock. If not, you may leave at this time. Thank you.